Good morning. Thank you all so much for joining us. Today, there is a growing need for effective science communication because of its impact on public perception, on funding, and on legislation. Science can be communicated in various formats. It can be a tweet, an interview with a reporter or a commentator. It can be a video, a post on social media, or an interaction with a political commentator. And new forms will continue to emerge. The communicators of science are a diverse group. They are scientists, the university, the media, nonprofit and for-profit organizations, advocacy groups, amateur political commentators, and science enthusiasts. Many of you in this room may belong to one or more of those groups. Let's take a sampling. How many people in this room are scientists? And panelists, please join in. Raise your hands if you're a scientist. Thank you. Who here represents the media, a reporter, a journalist? Please raise your hands. Oh, that's scary, Stephen. There's one more. Who is here from a university? A university, yes, sir. Please raise your hand. Anybody from a university? Okay, good. A nonprofit organization? Fabulous. A for-profit organization? And who is here because they have a passionate interest in science? Raise your hands. Thank you so much. You can see the diversity, and that is going to provide us with an excellent opportunity to learn from each other. So please engage, ask questions, share insights from your work. Our panel is going to be talking about the challenges in communicating science to the non-scientific community. The panelists are well-positioned to lead this topic. They were selected by the Global Thinkers Forum and by the Royal Scientific Society. I am convinced that their passion and their knowledge will inform and inspire us. So please join us as we look forward to a robust 90 minutes, and I will turn to Dr. Hanan with my first question. And just so you all are aware, our office put this panel and our distinguished panelists on cloud sourcing with Google, and we got 88 questions that came in from the participants of this conference. We took them and condensed them into 18, and so the questions that you are seeing here were requested by a lot of the people. And we want the engagement to start right away. So we're going to come to you with questions, and they'll be asking questions of each other. Our first question is to you, Dr. Hanan. What characteristics of science make it challenging to convey to a non-scientific audience?
In fact, I just wanted to start by answering. I don't know. I always kind of going out of the line. Being a teacher in nature, if you allow me, Anjum, I would like to stand and maybe show a few slides. In fact, most of the questions that I've asked you to comment on, they are overlapping, and this is the nature of science. It is interdisciplinary. And since two days, we've been listening, listening, and there is no chance for audience to interact, and I don't like that. So please allow me, maybe I will just, you know, get outside the norm and maybe act just as if I'm a family member with you, okay? Yeah, I think I'm slim. Could I have my, please? Anyway, while she's putting the slides, in fact, one of the, I mean, the challenge is a challenge in many ways in science. I will say that sometimes the science content itself and the nature or the way of communicating science to, yes, to audience or to policymakers or even to ordinary women at home, this is a challenge. I will just give you examples from my own experience. A few years ago, when I was teaching, there was a special course called Transgenic Plants and Transgenic Animals, meaning transferring genes, playing with genes and transferring it into plant, and the plant will produce some products and be another thing. Anyway, it's about GMOs. So my graduate students, they were master's students, and I said, let's just make an assay, because it looks like the public are not aware. What is the GMO? And they really designed very good questionnaire, and they distributed among so many sectors of society, including even Leave It or Not policymakers. And to our surprise, 95% of the people who were interviewed or filled the questionnaire, they don't know what is GMO. All what they know, they say, this is a toxic poison to our health. That's all. They don't know what is it. So this is a challenge, and this is where we should start, how to communicate science content in a really very clever, skilled way. The other story, and this is, you know, in Jordan, I'm sure it's in most, you know, maybe Arab countries or developing countries, regarding the antimicrobial drugs, antibiotics. Here in Jordan, if a woman, a lady, or usually this is happening, most of the ladies, they like a lot of medicine to be given to them. If she goes, I mean, she's my relative. I'm not going far. And she was telling me, she thinks that I'm a physician. She said, "Dr. Hanan, I went to this lousy doctor. I told him I'm really suffering. Everything in my body is itching, and he did not give me any medicine. He doesn't understand anything." I said, she said, "I want, you know, this with the yellow color and with the blue color." She's talking about antibiotics. I said, "You have a viral." He did some, you know, examination. It's not bacteria. Why should he give you? She said, "No, it should." I mean, and this is, and because we could buy, you know, antibiotics just from the shelf. I mean, we don't need prescription. This is another crazy thing. And even the way they take drugs, you know, when I tell them, when you take antibiotics, you have to finish the whole course. But she says, "No, this is, it's like a magic. I took one bell, you know, two bells, and then after the second day, I'm fine." See, I mean, this kind of communication that we should really give to audience and even to policymakers. Shall I go on or?
Stephen, could elaborate on this a little? And we'll come back to you. Is that all right?
Yeah. Thank you, Anjum. One, two, three, four, you all hear me? First of all, I want to thank the Global Thinkers Forum for setting up this very timely session. It's a joy to be involved with the forum. I am, as you know, because I didn't have my hand up, not a scientist. I'm most definitely a journalist. I've spent four decades in journalism. I've launched four 24-hour news channels. So I have printing ink, in a way, in my blood as a journalist. And my father always joked that I wanted to choose the font at my christening, which was a sort of a printing gag. But what it has taught me, in that today, with so much information out there on television, on your computer, on various devices, it has never been easier to miscommunicate because there are so many opportunities to do so. Now, it's made me very cynical, but I'm also curious, and of course, you can't call yourself a journalist unless you're curious. The greatest problem with communication is we don't listen to understand. We often listen to reply because we're in such a hurry to reply. When we listen with curiosity, though, we don't listen with that intent. We listen for what is behind the words. Even the English language is often misinterpreted. Remember the adage, "America and Britain, two countries divided by common language." So many words carrying different meanings and sending the wrong messages. It's therefore never been more important to communicate clearly and honestly because we are living in an age of a communication crisis, and there's never been so much information. A crisis because although we are sort of deluged with information, we often communicate badly or not at all. And the big problem with communication is the illusion that it has taken place at all. And despite or because of the best efforts of Silicon Valley, we are living in a disinformation age, all of which makes the task of communicating science to non-scientists that much more challenging. And the main reason for that is another description of our digital age is the attention economy. Have you heard of that phrase, the attention economy? And that is an internet shaped around the demands of an advertising economy. And perhaps it should be renamed, the lack of attention economy, because there's no doubt technology is contributing towards so-called continuous partial attention, which is severely limiting, in my view, our ability to focus and at the same time understand science. Everyone is distracted all the time, and that will limit communication.
And I remember in Canada, in Toronto, a very, very relevant scholar decided to call his own university department as Department for Communicative Disorders, because an expert of communication today has mainly to deal with disorders, sometimes with disasters.
So it's for Mr. Stephen? So four decades in journalism, that's a very long time. So you've been in journalism your whole life? So what message do you have? Oh, sorry. A message as a person who spent his entire life in journalism?
I think it is basically that scientists have to learn how to speak and communicate and write to non-scientists. And I've come, I've made some notes here, and I think scientists need more inspiration and more inspired communication. In principle, I think there are two main barriers surrounding the communication of science to non-scientists. The receiving party is not interested, or the teacher uses cryptic language or difficult jargon, an imaginative narrative, no practical or broader context. Now, if those two assumptions could be addressed, the challenges would be significantly reduced. In fact, by addressing the second assumption, we are eliminating, in effect, the first one. Through imaginative communication, personalization of the narrative, and contextualization, we can make the receiving party interested in what has been communicated. And that is especially true in medicine, where science and communication are coming together in a truly beneficial way. Just last week, as you will know, Hanan, in a medical first, surgeons on different sides of the world put on virtual reality headsets to view a London operating theater and jointly operated on a patient. Now, that's communication of the finest kind and the highest level. What language they used, I don't know, but it obviously worked because the patient survived and is better. The technology they used, which displays images and patient notes to the remote surgeons, could be used routinely in hospitals within five years. And surgeons are already routinely using their science and communicating their science using Skype or other video call systems. And the VR technology took the concept a stage further, and I think it improved communication and care for patients around the world. I want to move on to big data and scientists, but I'm not going to do that now.
Thank you very much. In fact, real communication skills need expensive, extensive training and practice in order to communicate laypeople. I think it's very important to communicate, but also scientists should use their own ways of communicating and make their life easy. For example, I have given many ways on how to use, scientists should not use foggy, ambiguous language. They should use simple language that layperson or public can understand. Also, I believe that simplifying the concepts to the people, I don't mean simplifying, over-simplified or complicated, but also make it real, make it be understandable to the audience and the layperson that they could understand it. Also, I believe that they should use what we call funnel model, that we should start from low or high concepts, then go down in order to break it and make it easy for the layperson or the people to understand. Storytelling is also a good way of communicating layperson, which is sometimes you can describe your, what we are working on in your laboratory in a story way, that it's easy for people to understand. Family, friends, neighbors, they are also good people that you can communicate with the laypersons and you make your life easy, and they make them understand and realize the meaning of science. Also, summarizing, don't talk about big subjects to the layperson. Give them direct, the small concepts that they will understand, and they can communicate with other laypersons also. I have also some ideas that Professor said we could make metaphors, analogs, which also make scientific concepts easy, because scientific concept is not easy for layperson, so I would like to make them easier for them. Also, I, speaking to media, especially in our country, sometimes I think we need to speak to the media, we need to use social media also, and I don't understand or I feel amazing if I see a professor or one working that he is trying to speak to the media. So please, this is what we, I am sure that we should train our scientists how to communicate with the layperson, how to communicate with the public in order to express their science concepts for them and how to use them in their daily life. Thank you.
Well, as I said, you know, this is really overlapping issues. So if we could flip from one question to another, but we could go on like this. For example, I think the most important thing, if you need the communicating science regarding facts, research findings, or any new, you know, like infectious disease, whatever, it has to reach the policymakers to make it more effective and implemented. And here in our countries, in fact, this is the most difficult task. Imagine none of the Arab embassies here, they have a science advisor. Then who, they are taking advice from who then? I mean, there is credibility of the whoever they call it expert, and in reality, he or she is not an expert, and they are taking, you know, resources from him or them. And that comes also to the media. I'm sorry, I have to be harsh on you, Steve. Sometimes the media, I'm talking here, for example, Jordan, you tell them about some scientific research, and all of a sudden, you know, some results, you find it in the media, in the newspaper, and it's totally wrong. I mean, it has really, we say it's like two sides of the weapon, you know? It's really critical. The other also issue that is really, especially with the lay, ordinary person, when it touches ethics and values, because there are certain beliefs, you know, like religious beliefs for certain people. For example, you tell them cancer patients. I have a sister, by the way, my eldest sister, peace upon her soul, she died from breast cancer. And I spent five years just educating her to, you know, accept to have, you know, chemical therapy and radiotherapy. She said, "Well, my life is with God. He will end it, and this is faith. I don't want to take anything." I said, "Of course, it is. At the end, it's from God, but this will at least, you know, lengthen your life expectancy or prognosis," you know? And I really struggled with her because she said, "This is against my values. It's against my religion." See, this is another barrier. This is another challenge, is it contradicts with the ethics or with the values that we really have. And even like, sometimes, you know, you know, now there is what is called personalized medicine, meaning like now with the sequencing of the whole human genome, for example, I would take myself as an example. Now, they could predict from sequencing my genome, for example, if I have a gene that will cause like breast cancer or colon cancer or diabetes, and it will be in my record. So somebody will say, "This is not ethical. Who will employ me with all these diseases in my record?" See, I mean, this is really another critical issue that is make it hard on, you know, communicating science. And the other point that Abdullah, I mean, Mahafatul Alqab, Abdullah said, is the how to communicate. I am an expert, I'm a scientist, but sometimes I need the training to how to communicate what, you know, the scientific results and finding. Not any expert could communicate, you know? I might be expert in teaching, expert in research, but when it comes to deal with people, with society, nobody will listen to me. They will just kick me out because I'm not really, you know, trained to do that.
I'm more than happy to give you some media training, Hanan. I can be hired half-days or full-days. Please contact my agent. But a couple of very important points you made there, and be harsh as you'd like. Communications between countries must promote understanding. We know that. So went the dream. But the machines of communication, you're right, can be manipulated. What can be communicated can be truth or lie. Communication is a strong force for either good or evil. When we read in a newspaper that scientists say this discovery may have importance in the search for a cure for cancer, the paper is only really interested in the use of the idea, not the idea itself. Hardly anyone can understand the importance of an idea, so it's therefore up to science to best explain its value in language everyone can understand. So maybe scientists should undertake media training.
I would like to agree with Professor Hanan. Yesterday, I have attended one of the presentation there, and I think Professor Hanan, next time, would like to make political, leaders and politicians' understanding of science, because how we would like to transfer these subjects to the leaders or politicians in our countries to accept our decision-maker, accept our consultation or something like this. Thank you.
Fernando, would you like to say something?
I think there is the audience. Some questions. Yeah.
Good morning, all. I think if we need to have a good communications between individuals, we must begin from the family and by the socialization circles for individuals. I think, I think it is the first step for all to communicate, from family, then to society, to the whole life. Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. I'm Joslanur from UNESCO. I'm UNESCO Focal Point on Science Communication. So in UNESCO, we are working in three categories of target group. First, our first target group is decision-maker. So how to communicate science to the decision-maker? It is very important because this decision-maker is someone who takes the decision about science, technology, and innovation, how the budget will be distributed in science, and then to bring science, technology, innovation policy to the national development policy. And then the second target group, it is productive sector, industry and agriculture. So we have to communicate to these people how science can contribute in the improvement of their production system. And then we work with science centers, science park, technology business incubator, and also with maker spaces. And then our third target group is public at large. So we work with science centers, science museum, so to communicate science to the public at large. So it cover all of the spectrum of science communication. It is what we did in UNESCO. Thank you.
Basically, what you're saying is you need to sell the idea. You have to sell the idea to the public and to the people who control the money. And they are the people who run all our lives. Accountants run all of us. They make all the decisions. So if you're at UNESCO, you have valuable medical research. You have two ways of going. You have to sell it to the people who will spend money on developing the idea or spreading the idea. But secondly, you have to have people who really understand the complexities of that idea and can simplify it, because only people who really understand the issue, the idea, the research, the theory, can simplify that. And only, people are only interested in a simplified version, because otherwise, the idea just goes straight over their heads. And that's why you have to know your subject to sell it.
Hello, everybody. Ah, that's better. My name is Rachel, and I want to thank you, modern moderator, for failing at the very beginning to ask how many people in the room are professional science communicators who are not journalists? One? Any more? Yes, thank you. I just wanted to make the point and follow on from Mr. Cole's comments about understanding the science and simplifying it. And I think sometimes scientists or people can focus too much on a quick way to tell a lot of people about a lot of science. And in fact, there is something to be said for engaging a few people with a small amount of science, which will, over time, develop their appetite for learning more about science. There's more than one way to do that, and I work for a company that does do that. We work with researchers. We're doing a project with UNESCO at the moment, which is exactly about helping scientists pick apart their science, but using professional science communicators who aren't journalists but performers to engage non-scientists, ordinary people, children, families, with the science. So the point really that I'm making is that scientists, there are the facilities to use journalists to help scientists get their messages across, which you've already said can not work sometimes and work sometimes. There are, I'm establishing really, there are other ways to do it, and sometimes you can look at different ways. Once you've understood exactly the audience that you want to talk to, there are other ways to do it, and you could use other science communication tools to do so. So thank you also, Mr. Cole, for opening the floor to sales plugs. So I hope to be able to do that during this session as well. Thank you. Well, he hasn't made his point yet. He may make a point later.
I would like your comments on what you think is the importance of teaching the audience, in particular, children on critical thinking, because in this era of so much information when, where we have the difficulty in controlling what they have access to, should we be teaching them to think critically and not believe everything that they read?
I have to say that to be curious is to be intelligent. You have to have that curiosity. But I think your point is how much should we expose children to social media? Is that really where you're going? Well, that's good parenting. I mean, I've got three sons, and I have a hard time from all three of them.
Yeah.
And nobody could be more critical of me than them. I wish I had daughters sometimes. But, you know, I think this is something they learn by watching a parent.
Yeah.
And your approach to news, your comments, your persona, how you react to people, how you react to situations, when you're watching television or news or you're reading something, your choice of material. It's a long learning curve.
Sure.
But there's no single one answer.
No.
Yes. Um...
In fact, you touch very, very important nowadays especially, which is the social media. My voice is, okay, it's right. Because they are recording.
This one works very well.
It's working? Okay. Steve said he has three sons, and I have four sons. And, you know...
This isn't a competition.
But, you know, the reason I open a social or Facebook account and Twitter is because of them. Because sometimes, like, I was sitting, you know, with all of them, and they were talking. For me, it was nonsense. By the way, they are all in the medical area. And they will say things, well, this is in my account, this is in my Twitter. Somebody said this, I said, why, I am like, you know, an ignorant. So I opened the Facebook account. And in reality, I was spying on them. Not because I want to know, but because to lead them, to aware them. And, you know, now even for professors in universities, we are using social media, but it has to be very ineffective and, how should I say it? We have to be really careful. Because these kids nowadays, I think they take the words from these social media more than they take it from their own teachers, you know? It's really dangerous. I mean, I don't know if, you'd like to say something? Sorry, I'm taking...
Straightly to the point, not about social media, but about the critical thinking. Our experience in Italy within the Milano University is mainly allowing learners at the university level, but also at the high school and the preparatory school level, dealing with practical epistemology. Let's say, how a scholar is used to think and is used to behave in order to reach some results. Results that could be not trustable at all, because it's science, it's a never-ending process. So, thinking in a divergent way. Learning how to ask difficult questions. Learning how to handle power distance in between the so-called expert, supposed to be a real expert, and laypeople. So, learning how to handle the communicative dynamics within a team. Trying to behave like they were in a real lab. That is the way we are trying to deal with.
Fernanda is absolutely bang on the money there. A few years ago, I was involved with the UN and engineering awards called the Mondialogo Engineering Awards. And it meant, it was young people. And a girl from Birmingham in the United Kingdom would get together with a boy from Nepal. And the two of them would work out a way of how they could make water run uphill, for example. You know, a scientific experiment, but working in a team, the two of them, working within an organization. And a couple of them at the awards, and people used to give their time free. Lewis Hamilton presented the last one. Didn't ask for a fee, by the way, so he's number one in my book. And a couple of the young people said, how do you make engineering sexy, Mr. Cole? You know, how do you make people want to come into engineering? And perhaps that's true of science as well. Because, you know, it's something slightly remote, science for a lot of children. And at school, you know, it's a bit geeky. So you've got to make it attractive. And that type of award, that kind of experiment, that kind of working in a team can really build critical facilities, faculties rather, as well as experimentation and a collegiate effort. And perhaps there should be, eventually the money ran out, Dame LeBenz sponsored it with the UN. But perhaps there should be a new set of young scientist awards that would innovate and bring teams together, and boys and girls together from different countries.
Sorry. I think now most of the curriculum planning, we are talking about 21st century skills. And one of the most of them is the critical thinking, creativity, and so on. But I think the problem that we are facing in preparing these curriculums, that the heading curriculum, you know, the students, for example, university may have some courses clear or something like, but when they go outside the school or the university, I think the media is different now, the Facebook and internet and so on. It's really a big issue how to define exactly what's critical thinking, what's creativity, and so on. Thank you.
Yeah, hello, my name is Bonny Wolf Bunch, I'm from Science Europe. I have a question to the profession of journalism or professional science educator. As we hear, or we learned, that scientists have to better train, or to learn to better communicate and to innovate. And you are the facilitator, but my question is also, obviously journalists also have a problem nowadays to communicate to the audience or also be misunderstood. So my question is more, how do you see or reinvent your field of profession, especially in science?
How do you...
How do you reinvent or think about new outlets to also to reach out to your audience?
How do you reach out to your...
Yeah, as a facilitator between the two worlds.
Very, very difficult. Because in this lack of attention economy, what people are looking for are morsel-sized chunks of information that they can digest. You know, so trying to read hard science is extremely hardgoing for the non-scientist because you have to really concentrate. And that is a problem for a lot of young people because of the distractions that I said at the beginning. But it is very important because we look to science to explain the universe. But in terms of messages, I mean, again, it goes back to the Mondialogo Awards. It goes back to your interview technique with scientists. It goes back to scientists who are trained. Trained is perhaps a harsh word. But they are people with natural enthusiasm who can simplify the issues. And enthusiasm is contagious. And if there are big, if there are big scientific issues, bring them right down to the smaller and ones that are applicable, as Dr. Hanan indicated, about learn who your audience is, and then tailor the message to your audience.
Yeah, in fact, I agree with Steve. I will just have maybe two minutes, then I will leave it to the professional. I could see here some professional people in science education. In fact, you're really touching very, very important and sensitive issue, especially for the youth, you know, the young people. You know, like in Jordan, 70% of the people are under 30. And as Steve and I said, I think now it's not anymore that I will dictate them and tell them and they listen and that's it. It's the other way around. I have to see what they want, what they want to learn. It's not anymore dictatorship from teacher to student. Come on, I mean, I'm learning from my kids, believe it or not. I'm ignorant when I'm standing beside them. We have to give them trust, we have to see what they want, and then accordingly tailor our science communication to them. Why not, I haven't seen any, I'm talking about the Arab world, I don't know about the West. There is no science journal which is focused only, it's allocated for these youth. Why not? For example, I mean, this is just throwing ideas, and we will take your feedback. Because we are here, not, again, I'm not playing the role of teacher and you're listening. We really are in bad need for your feedback. Thank you, I will stop here.
I'm Fatma Hussain, I'm an associate research scientist in Petroleum Research Center, Kuwait Institute for Scientific Research. My concern is not the youth, because the youth nowadays with the technology are educating their parents about a lot of things. They are aware, they are open, and all the resources and references are open because of that technology which they are grown with. Now, my concern as a researcher doing R and D for the development of products, energy, blah, 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 is our findings, how we can market them to the decision makers. We need some communicators, a good media, who can understand and transfer our findings to the decision makers in order to respect the science that we are doing. We need those infrastructure or category of, like, specialists that they can understand the importance of transferring the science to the people. Not the youth. The youth are excellent in knowing what they want to know. They can go to the right resources, they can ask questions, they can find the information they are needing. And nowadays, the education is not like what we gained before. Now, they brought the subject to the teacher. They discuss, they prepare themselves via knowledge, via browsing things in the world. And instead of just taking like the theory, they discuss the theory in more open way. But the thing that we, what we need as a scientist is the media that can transfer our findings in a right way to decision makers to understand their importance. Because what we are doing is not that should be used now. What we are doing is the future. So how can we build the new strategies according to what we are doing now for the future to be looked over from those decision makers?
Yeah, thank you very much. I, okay, I deliberately tried to meet this meeting because I have contributions to make that I have lost over the years. Well, right now, I am outgoing president of African Academy of Sciences, based in Nairobi. Although I'm a Nigerian. And I used to be president of African Mathematical Union. And I belong to five scientific academies, including TWAS, you know, including African Academy of Science, including Nigerian Academy of Science, and so on. And at various fora, we have talked about how to reach non-scientists with our science. I'm a mathematician, and what you said is very true, that global illiteracy in contemporary science is very infectious. From point of view of those who are given money to do research, or those who are given grants, and so on and so forth. So it's a very serious problem that a global community like this should do something about. And I'm happy that we have this chance as a world, because we have had discussed this at TWAS meetings, at Nigeria Academy meetings, at African Academy meetings, and so on and so forth. But it's only a body like this that can coordinate what we think about popularization of science. Pardon?
Yeah, that's very good.
Yes, and I can just itemize a few points that should be noted and popularized. First of all, it is only those who understand contemporary science that can help to propagate it, because many people, you know, things are technical. For instance, in the American Mathematical Society, I'm also a fellow of the American Mathematical Society. I'm in fact a foundational fellow. Now, this AMS has a publication that is called "What is Happening in the Mathematical Sciences These Days?" And these contributions are written out by science mathematical journalists who understand the specialists to be able to write these articles. And I will seize this opportunity to appeal to many of us who are members of academies. Because it is at this level of academies that people understand science in its various ramifications. But a lot of us think we are dead in our hand by contributing to explaining what we are doing to others. Not just outside. Somebody asked me, what was I doing? And I was happy that I was able to explain to her, even though what I'm doing is highly, highly technical. But she was happy that I was able to explain, and we have said we will keep in touch. So, there are two jobs we have. One, to explain to non-scientists. Two, to explain to young people to inspire them to do science in the future. And it will have to be all hands on deck for academies, those who are interested, for scientific associations in our various countries, you know, to try to explain what is going on in the sciences. And also to our universities and higher institutions to create sections of their communities that explain to fundamental and useful science in a way that will impact the community. Because the hostility that is greeting contemporary science is worldwide. This is the point. So I think that this is an opportunity, we can itemize areas that need popularization. And in fact, it's even more important in our own context of Africa because there's too much superstition. You know, people think that if you can be killed by thunder, somebody can send thunder to you to kill you, and so on. And people need to understand how to make rain, you know, in the lab, and so on. How to make thunder and lightning, and so on. And these are easy experiments that have been in science museums in Europe and America, you know. So, these are things that we have to think about to create more science centers, especially in developing countries, you know, where they hardly exist, to write popular articles, and for many of us to come out of our cocoon, you know, to write popular articles for people to read. Thank you.
I am an anthropologist from Korea. The science communication gap may be regarded as pure science and applied science, and natural science, socio-cultural science, and whatever. So, actually, here with the communities, what level of communities? That's the most important criteria we should discuss in that division of the viewpoints. That's what I want to hear.
Does this one, oh, it works, so wonderful. I like everything you said just a second ago about the popularization. Perhaps we could have a session in two years' time on the science of explanation. That might make a good title. And scientists, perhaps, to move the onus on to you in this room, scientists perhaps learn, must learn how to integrate with the rest of society a little more to explain yourselves and explain your expertise and explain your science to people. Because, you know, this, in the past, as you know, scientists have been in a corner of the room with the white coats and the big brains. We don't know what they're thinking, we don't know, we're not hearing from them. And this is so important now, the pressure on science is very great. The implications for our health and the health of our planet have never been greater. And of course, the PR manipulation of big tobacco and climate change are two examples of how science can be manipulated by vested interests. I just want to give you one example, a newspaper headline about statins. Suffering on statins? Stop taking them now. Except, of course, that was an entirely false headline based on an underpowered study, but the fallout was horrific. So today, again, another title could be fake news, fake science. And if there's a science we don't understand, it's off to Professor Google to explain, which is often very wrong.
Can I answer this question? You know, when you talk about media, I think media is not enough. Also, you would like audience for the media. Our kids sometimes, when you watch a movie about science, he may not interest too much on that. So he will find a movie and another thing, so, you know. It's a problem, it's not only the media. The important thing is that we would like audience, we would like our children, our kids... kids to hear about the scientific things. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Abdullah Shumali and I partially work in the video production for scientific content. I believe that one of the most important ways to communicate scientific material to the non-scientific people is by combining entertainment with science. And there's many, there's been many successful models that's been established, series, sitcoms, whether it was comedy, whether it was documentaries. So when we integrate entertainment into, with science, a lot of the masses just want to watch it. We don't like, okay, go watch science. No, they, we, they want to watch it. And then not, even non-interested people in science would want to watch it just to be entertained. And that way, you can give them information without them even asking for it.
And allow me to add a second word. Eduographics. Education and infographics. If you make interactive edographics, it's our experience in Western Europe and in the US. If you allow people to interact by the flick of their hands, by touching a screen, a wall, interactive edographics that are also small edutainment pills, you will reach really the success in communicating science to laypeople.
I think what we need in our region, Jihan Haddad, Royal Scientific Society. I think what we need in our Arab region especially about science, we need to focus on awareness sessions about science to all society in general levels. What is the science? How can we use the science? This is what we need to reach all people the meaning of science. Thank you.
I'm from the Young National Academy of Sciences. So I just want to point out that at the moment, I'm also working with my colleagues voluntarily to produce short video in YouTube for like two minutes and to produce short movies on biodiversity. And the reason I want to bring this up, I'm not, I don't quite agree with the lady over there that youths are excellent in searching information in Google, because in Indonesia we have problems with negative contents in social media. And I also volunteer to teach orphan girls in Indonesia. And I'm afraid, I'm really afraid that if we don't have, we don't give them some help or attention and expose them to globalization, they will be exposed to another negative point of views. So the reason I want to ask then, is there any possibility that we can collaborate? For example, in Indonesia, we don't have maybe enough resources to model, for example, this museum exhibition in Jordan, which is excellent to expose children especially. Is there any possibility to collaborate in this? Thank you.
In fact, thank you. I, I really agree with you. You know, it's really very dangerous really, because the youth are taking information from any sources now, from social media. And in fact, we had that, it's a simple example in, in our countries. You know, sometimes they take the wrong information, like, you know, Daesh? I don't want to call it ISIS, it's Daesh. You know, they spread their information, like they will say, for the youth, they will have a group and, you know, it was, they were discovered. Like this is a simple chemistry, you could make a pump, you could go to this, you know, poor people, you could, and, and it's a science. And they are taking it for granted, you know, these young kids. I mean, this is really dangerous. I mean, we have to be really fully guiding these young kids, not just take, you know, open source information without, you know, empowering them and guiding them. Yes, of course, we have to know what they, I mean, I was saying, we have to take from them what they need, but at the same time, they need guidance and they need to be, you know, which accurate, you know, sources and how to deal with them and, and that you need monitoring, especially the young kids. I'm talking about even school, you know, 10th grade and 7th grade. It's really dangerous just to keep them taking information without meaning of science, because, you know, there's, there is also the story of biological weapons. Like if they, you could train them how to make powder vaccine, you know, toxin, Clostridium toxin, and if this is a spread, nanogram will kill, you know, a whole village. I mean, they will tell them, this is simple, come, I will teach you and, you know, they will pay the money, imagine. You know, this is, I mean, this is crazy. Sorry.
Hello, yeah, good afternoon. My name is Daniel Corbell, British Council. And I just wanted to bring back the discussion to an audience that had been mentioned a few times, and that's policymakers. The policymakers also as an audience of science communication. And I guess something that came out in yesterday's session on science advice was also that scientists can, some scientists are excellent communicators, but then they become advocates and lobbyists for specific issues sometimes. And sometimes these, these might relate to their own research. Sometimes they, they, there might be a commercial angle to that, but it doesn't necessarily mean that this is grounded then in the, or, or based in the context of the rest of the scientific literature. So, and, and there lies a danger if they, if policymakers or whoever trust a scientist, because they are scientists and a good communicator, but don't follow, well, I guess, standards and, and on, on what is good science and representative science, scientific evidence. So I was wondering if the, the panel could maybe comment on that and, and perhaps this dimension of, of standards in, in science communication.
Nothing serious to, to say more, because it's really challenging us with something very, very, very relevant. Lobbying, in my experience, lobbying is the, the great beast. I know a little bit of the corridors within the European directories in Brussels, as well as I know a little bit the National Science Foundation in Arlington, Washington, DC. It's a political issue. Depends more on the countries and the powers and the politics instead of something. So I'm sorry, but I'm not able to answer in a better way.
Thank you.
In fact, just want to make and to clarify, Daniel, your question. When we, when we say science, we don't mean pure sciences. Science, it's everything. It's arts, it's humanitarians, it's law, it's social sciences. So it's interdisciplinary. So we cannot just be away, you know, like I'm, I'm biologist and then I, I, I will not mingle or, or, you know, it's interdisciplinary, it's not just pure sciences. So communicating science, it does not come only from scientists per se. Comes from lawyers, comes from social scientists, come from psychologists, because sometimes you have to understand the psychology of the people you're dealing with. As scientists, I cannot, I need help, you know, I just point to clarify. I think that gentleman has been holding his hand for Yaelin.
Can I, can I answer, Daniel? Daniel, I think I agree with you. I have did one of my slides this morning about Sir Francis Bacon. I think originally, no one can talk about science in 16th century, you know? But when Francis Bacon was living in the royal, with the king, I think he was brave to talk about the practical part of science. And I think the literacy of science start from that point. So we can say that the leader of science literacy was Francis Bacon, who was living from 1561 to 1622. So I think the leaders are important persons to promote science everywhere. And this is the, the point that I was talking that we should persuade the decision maker to accept our ideas sometimes. Sometimes they don't accept. Thank you.
Thank you. Jackie McGlade, used to be chief scientist in the UN and also in the European Environment Agency. I wanted to just raise two points and get your reaction. The first one is that in those two roles, I was often encountering very, very genuine questions from ministers, from member states, where they really wanted to know before they made a deep decision, sand and dust storms, whatever. So they wanted the science interpreted. And my job, in a sense, was to gather the experts behind me. And I say that metaphorically, because genuinely, we haven't trained a community of scientists who are willing to be non-competitive. And I think that's where we almost need a, a new genre of science interpreters who've been grounded in the natural sciences or whatever area, but who don't have a vested interest in any one area. And it's extremely important, because member states actually need to trust the person who's giving that information. So I'm curious in your Global Thinkers Forum, whether that's a way to sort of transcend the individualism, which is what is so competitive and which makes academics, you know, go for each other? And, and how do we get some more people who can have broad enough education to be able to do that translation? And then I'd like to go to the other end, which is some of the most successful stories of science have come through, let's face it, Disney. You've got the bee story, you've got Wally. These are things which kids love. They absolutely love the kind of feature films. And it strikes me that we have never put huge investment into feature films, not documentaries, because they're boring actually mostly, but feature films, which have got the very, very, very best science at their core. I could think of fantastic stories about quantum physics and all sorts of things. So I'm just curious, you know, if I was the, if I was the DG or the commissioner for science and research, I literally would be knocking on the doors of Disney and saying, when are we making the next movie on? And literally go through the whole list of science that we want to communicate. Because if you look at the impact of Wally and the bee story, and then you understand where the public discourse on pollination came from, literally, you can put your finger back to that movie. So I, I'm just kind of thinking, when we think about when we invest in science, there should be that bit at the end, which is about how do you get the kind of best science into communications? And I'm not talking about just chit chat kind of communication, I'm talking about, you know, mainstream entertainment. But I'd love to get your reactions on that.
Well, you must contact a screenwriter very soon, I suspect. They have a lot of support. In the year 2000, I was then, I'd launched BBC World and I was, I'd just come back from Moscow after Mr. Putin was elected. And I came with two ideas. One, for business television, a program of business television, because business is rubbish on, on television. Nobody has yet come up with a good enough program. But the other one was an IT program about science and technology. Because in the year 2000, nobody running companies knew anything about science or technology, I assure you. They thought a hard drive was from the Dead Sea to Oman, I can tell you, for nothing. And so they relied on geeks to tell them how to run their companies and what IT to install. So I came up with a program called Click Online, which I eventually took to 27 countries. And one rule was never show a, a computer on television. I don't want to see a screen on a screen. And to make sure all the stories about the development of information technology was told through people, storytelling. And scientists aren't always the best storytellers. And if they did learn to be better storytellers, then we'd all learn more about the story. And whether that uses mass media, this young man saying about info entertainment or whatever way, which is a fine line, by the way, you've got to be very careful with information and entertainment, that the two don't blur or you get the wrong messages. Because, you know, it's, you've got to really interpret them accurately. But that's what we tried to do on Click Online. And it's still running 17 years later. And I, I just wish I'd taken a license out on it, but I didn't.
Thank you, Stephen. Thank you. You baited very patiently.
I think we have two different issues that are, I can hear the tone for. One of them is the public engagement. The second one is the enabling the children to be involved more in, in the sciences through encouragement. I think the best part of the public that needs the information are the parents of the children. And once we have programs that are addressed to parents, either through their schools or inviting them to come to the schools at all levels, to be engaged in the activities that their children are learning in school, and also to make use of the hundreds and thousands of applications now that are made in science, the apps, which are extremely important for both kids and, and parents, because they are not made in, you know, technical terms, but rather in a popularized manner. And there are, if we look through the internet now for apps in every single subject in science, that we will see a tremendous amount that can be used also and to involve the parents in inviting them to see these. And perhaps, science is, is dealing with practical activities and learning the processes of science. So when the kids are encouraged to do projects, for example, parents are usually involved and/or invited to come to the schools to, to participate, to see what their kids have produced. And this is the only way that, you know, can dissipate these ideas through the, the communities.
Thank you very much. Actually, I'll just continue from this gentleman's point around parents being involved. I don't have a question, just to comment. I, I belong to both Pakistan and the United Kingdom. And I belong to an organization called the IEEE, which is the Institute of Electrical Electronic Engineers. We are the largest professional organization in the world. And to those of you who don't know us, we created the Wi-Fi standard. We have a number of programs running throughout the world where, where we are trying to actually popularize engineering and sciences. And, and the focus on our side has been twofold. One is teachers and the other one is parents. I mean, if we are able to get the point across to them in, in a good manner, they are the main influencers for, for the children. One program that we have started and which is going on, it's a, it's a movie called Dream Big. It's, it's being shown in the US at the moment. We partnered up with organizations like the American Society of Civil Engineers, Society for Women Engineers, et cetera, with a multimillion dollar budget to create a movie which shows how big engineering feats were achieved by regular people. And, and they are being shown throughout the world at the moment, in theaters and museums, et cetera. Secondly, the approach we have taken is we have gone to different museums throughout the world and we have actually put in exhibitions, we have funded exhibitions, we have live exhibitions going on in South Africa, in Uruguay, in India. And, and they have had a lot of impact. One of, one case study is in Uruguay, where we had a space oriented exhibition in one of the museums. And the feedback was, was just brilliant, because what you, what we did was, we, we occupied a part of the museum and we set up a space shuttle sort of simulation over there. And children would come and, and, and we have seen a lot of interest coming from there, people getting more interested. Because when children sort of come, they're in school, there, there is a stereotype, maths is hard, physics is hard. But when we are able to show them what actually science achieves, the greater sort of thing, then it, it sort of entrusts them more. Another thing we started off, especially regarding parents, is in different parts of the world, we, our local volunteers have actually started workshops in city centers. So they put up a tent in the city center after taking the local government's permission. They take regular materials and then they just put them in, put some guidelines on and invite people who are passing by, parents, childrens, et cetera, to come over and build something. We built a website called Try Engineering 10 years ago in collaboration with IBM. It, it, it has about 5 million hits per year. We have lesson plans available where using daily things, you can actually make things like robot arms, et cetera, very low cost. I mean, building a robot arm with, with papers, pencils and cardboard boxes, anybody can do in any part of the world. But you learn a lot of things for it. You learn about forces, you learn a lot of push-pull. And when you do that, when the children do that with their parents, they enjoy, they learn and, and it, it increases their interest and curiosity about science as well. So that's all from my side. Thank you.
National Science Foundation, Azerbaijan.
National Science Foundation, Azerbaijan. So I would like to draw your attention to one of the biggest problems in developing countries. It's a lack of science knowledge of journalists. For example, usually we face a problem if they don't give the proper popularization of science, and that's why we are organizing special sessions and trainings for journalists, but it's not about every journalist, but it's one of the biggest problems in developing countries. And the second, also, the science communication depends on the status of education program of each country. Of course, we have different systems, we are going to just merge in one system, but in any case, if there is a good education system, considering also the popularization of science, of course, it brings good benefit for country. And the third one is also one of the biggest problems for developing countries, is the lack of trust between science and business. So they don't trust so much yet, so if they will trust, they will invest much more money either in science or for science communication.
Hello, I just have a question to Mr. Stephen. My question is, what advice would you give to scientists who are trying to communicate their messages?
Science does its best to explain our universe with facts. The Holy Grail, being able to define causation, to say without doubt, this causes that, that's the German philosopher Immanuel Kant, maintained that causation was one of the fundamental concepts that rendered the empirical world comprehensible to us humans. And this is what underpins many of the pitfalls in the communication of science. Our brains are pining for a greater understanding of our environment, I think, to try and explain some of the chaos of the world we're currently living in, and also the uncertainty. And that agenda is being hijacked by competition and empowerment of a sort of headline claiming casuality. Now, those clickbait headlines about red wine, sex, depression, chocolate, superfoods, you name it, that tend to name-drop Oxbridge somewhere in there, or Harvard, usually have a study that simply denotes association, not causality. And so therefore, science is being miscommunicated, and sometimes very dangerously. And because scientists are not explaining themselves well, it's a bit like playing darts, throwing darts in a dartboard in the dark. You've no idea what's going to hit the target, and this is really important. And the agenda, the scientific agenda, is being hijacked by this sort of liberal, big tech elite that is focusing on big data, you know, the open sharing, access to data for everyone. That's not true. The algorithms of Fakebook, oh, sorry, Facebook, and Twitter do exactly the opposite. You know, our feeds are telling us what we want to read, our feeds are aimed at getting us clicking, and those algorithms will only make sure we get the information we agree with. And if you're not that interested in science, you're not going to be getting access to science. So you've got to change your reading habits, you've got to make, making, reading science magazines more attractive, you've got to make understanding and talking about science far more attractive, and make science more accessible.
So hello, I'm Deema Mansour, I'm the Director of Science Policy Analysis in the Royal Scientific Society. I actually have two questions for all the great panelists here. I've read ones that there's a problem not only in communication between scientists to non-scientists, there's also a problem in communication between scientists themselves. As, there couldn't be any more universal philosophers or scientists, the weight of knowledge now is too great for one mind to absorb. One mind would know only one little fragment, but he would know it very well. So to what extent do the great panelists agree with this or not? My second question is that yesterday I was attending a session with Dr. Vladimir Sucha, and he really stressed on the fact that scientists are only looking at science as facts, providing only facts, and they forget the societal behavior or the emotions that are involved in the whole process. Also, to what extent do you agree with this?
Thank you. Go ahead.
Well, you got us, and scientists, they have problems between themselves, you're right, but I will not reveal the secrets. Yeah, it's true, it's a pity, in fact. I mean, sometimes we, like, in the same country, or in the same university, or in the same organization, we had conflicts between each other. I'll just give you one example. One time, I would, I was about to make, you know, a report or a study about water quality in Jordan, it's for my own research, and then I want some figures, you know, about the usage of water, and then, believe me or not, every ministry gave me, or even water center, different number. Who should I believe? And they were fighting, no, we are the right one, don't take that source, and this is, I think it's a culture also. Oh, is that class? They will take me to court now. So, but yeah, I think that's a problem, and maybe we should be trained as scientists of how to trust each other, first of all. How, okay, competition is fine, but sometimes it reaches stage like we envy each other, we fight each other, and it's not just, by the way, it's in the developing world, it's in the developed world too, so I, you're right, but we have to find a way, but usually we don't talk about it, so.
15 seconds, facts do not exist, we have to deal with artifacts. A fact has to be added with emotions, social dynamics, and so on. Numbers do not exist as something that is mirroring the natural world. Numbers are artifacts. Scientists are in need to know and to share how to explain the way they are building numbers and the so-called facts. That is the challenge.
I would like to ask my colleague who talked about the lack of information among the journalists. I think you are right, sometimes when they are writing something in the newspaper or something, they exaggerate things. Sometimes, for example, in our, in our country, for example, in Jordan, there are many people who try to sell the plants. They say, if you eat this kind, it will be good for so, and so, and so. He's just giving such generalization without any, even without any evidence, you know. It's really a big problem in our country. Today, you can eat this vegetable, it will be nice, it will get out of cancer, and something like this. So when you read the document or the paper that he wrote, you will find nothing interesting, no evidence, just he said, and he tried to write. I don't know in Europe or in other countries. Yeah, it's a big story, really, and I thank my colleague that he raised this issue. Really, it's a big problem, and I don't know how to solve it. Even sometimes in our countries, we have some famous people talking about Islam sometimes. When they talk about some stories, they try to translate it. One time, I have heard one of our famous people, Egyptian, he talked about the atom. When he defined it, really, he didn't know anything, what is the meaning of atom scientifically, as we understand it. So sometimes I think we come to a conflict with those, lack of understanding of knowledge of those people. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hopefully, this would be the last word on this one, but we have a saying in journalism, that opinion is very cheap, but facts are on expenses.
Yes, absolutely.
So, you know, so the facts is what we're all looking for, and we're all looking for trusted sources.
As we're coming to the, nearly to the end of our time, could each of you please let the audience know one takeaway, an idea, a concept, anything that you want them to leave with, any thoughts for each of you, please?
Can I start? I think, thank you, Valeryani. I think we should take care of the knowledge of the layperson, even. And I have a study here carried in UK after Chernobyl 1986, I think. We have discovered that the people who were the farmer of the sheeps have better information about the radioactive for their sheeps, better than the experts or the scientists in UK. And it was really a big debate between the Ministry of Health and Fishing, Fishers in UK and those people. So I think we should take care, that even the laypersons, they have good information, we can use it. For example, in Jordan, we have the olive trees farmers. Olive trees in our country, we consider it as a holy tree, you know. So those people, they may have good information about how to sow, how to take care, how to deal with this, sometimes better than the scientists or our engineers. So please, we should take care of the knowledge of our layperson, and, thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Basically, good science can be translated into good journalism, basically do what I haven't been doing all morning, get to the point more quickly. When I hear scientists talking in conferences, they often talk around the houses and give the impression perhaps they don't quite know what is really important, and that's key. Write your article or speech so you get to the point, think elevator speech. And one last piece of advice, pay attention, and I don't mean to the screen in your hand. I believe scientists and policymakers working together must help lay the economic and intellectual foundations for better communications.
Well, I know I have only 15 seconds, right? My message is really, and that's my logo always, is we have to take care of our youth, our children, and, you know, trust them, take from them, and educate them and nurture them, because they are our future, we are outdated now, and they will carry the message later on, when it comes to science and science communication.
Two quick messages. Thank you so much for your proactivity. We are building knowledge and sharing knowledge really together, and visual storytelling techniques in a frame that has to be maximum 35 seconds, otherwise, attention will fall down. Visual storytelling techniques.
Thank you so much.
Sorry, also, last point, sorry for that. Don't tear your nose up as scholars, as scientists. If you would like to communicate, people, please don't raise your nose up, be quiet in order to allow them to hear you and listen to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. So on, just one minute. So on behalf of all the audience, myself, we'd like to thank the panelists for their contribution to today's discussion. And the panelists and I would like to thank each of you for your contribution, and then all of us together want to thank the Global Thinkers Forum. They put this together along with the Royal Scientific Society. Thank you, Ali, and a big thank you to Elizabeth, who sadly could not be with us today, the CEO of the Global Thinkers Forum. And I believe gatherings like these, discussions like these fuel the fire of creativity, they inspire us. So please stay engaged, we are going to be here for the next two days, find us, I'll give you my business card, take it, you'll have access to all our panelists here. Those of you that we couldn't get to answer your questions, we apologize, we're limited by time, but thank you again so much, everybody.